Okay, item number five, discussion, future after items. A preliminary budget 2018-19.
Yep, so, yep, thank you. Let's, uh, let's recall that this is, uh, multiple parts here to this budget. Uh, the preliminary budget simply allows the district to continue business as usual starting July one, the new fiscal year. Um, so we like to show on the preliminary budget that there's a framework, that there's a plan, that there are things in place and at which we are budgeting and sticking to. Um, come August, you will pass a budget, again, that is going to be published. That's gonna come in a much more formal DPI format, uh, that gets published in the paper. And then at the September annual meeting, we'll give a full-blown beautiful presentation. And then in October, we will actually pass the original budget four months into the fiscal year, uh, when we get all of our different variables. So, at this point in time, I, I've given you just a little different format, uh, this time around than what we saw, what we usually see. You usually just see a bunch of strings of numbers, and it's really difficult, I think, in that format from DPI to be able to kinda see what is what. This gives a little more description, kinda breaks it down by different, uh, how I think of the different, uh, budgetary categories. Um, I'll certainly refer to this in parts B and C as we, uh, as we look at, um, funding for different projects. I guess at this point, um, i-if you have certain questions or wanna see things differently, uh, when we pass the preliminary budget, uh, next Monday, I'm all ears.
Any questions for Mike? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, yep.
And now we go to B, Whitman High School Facilities Project.
Alright, so, um, we've done two tours now. We've toured the high school and looked at some different areas at the high school. We've toured the middle school, uh, just now. And so as we look at these different ideas and these different projects, of course, the question comes, well, how do we fund these things in the 18-19 budget? And so I'm just gonna treat these as two different pieces since they're two different items. So first, if you recall, again, back to the, to the high school and the walkthrough that we did there, uh, we've, what, what Todd has done is kind of broken out really the major scope of that project, which is looking at the freshman academy, um, eight total rooms there and making that, uh, good to go for, for the new freshman academy in 18-19, as well as the band wing, which we spent quite a bit of time looking at last, last time as well. And so if we implement some of the ideas that, that, uh, need to be implemented, uh, the scope of that project is $96,000. That's currently not in the preliminary budget. So then the question is, where do we get it from? Where do we get those dollars from? We, uh, we've been very intentional this year in not spending some dollars with the idea that this project, uh, would move forward, um, as, as it became fleshed out over the course of spring. Charlie has done a nice job within his budget of, of sticking to what are the needs at the high school and, and saying yes and no at the appropriate times. Uh, Todd has also done the same thing, um, as far as his budget goes. Usually, um, within the spring, you're beginning to look at where are their potential surpluses and looking at buildings and grounds projects that could be done. Uh, obviously, this year, we held off on that with the referendum. We wanna be able to see, did, would the referendum pass or not? And really by that time when the referendum passes and you begin to kinda break it down to get full projects in before June 30th, the fiscal year, in order to have it count as this fiscal year's expenditures, there really isn't the time to do that. We're kind of hamstrung, in a way, by, by waiting for the referendum results. So Todd and Charlie both have what are, what, uh, surplus dollars. Most fiscal years or in fiscal years in which you can't do work before June 30th, those dollars would simply roll into fund balance, and they would be fund balance, right? And, and offset, hopefully, um, some things, um, in the, in the future or short-term borrowing. In this instance, in which they've done a real intentional job of making sure that those dollars are there for us, in order to pay for this project, what I would propose that we do is take, uh, some of our retiree benefits that are to be paid out in 18-19. In other words, they are in the preliminary budget, um, for 18-19. Specifically, they are under, uh, the personnel, uh, the salaries and benefits, under miscellaneous pay in the benefit side. Uh, there's about $108,000 there that we can pay prior to June 30th. In other words, recognize that as an expense in 17-18 with the dollars that Charlie and Todd have set aside, and thus that would no longer be an expenditure on the books for 18-19, that we would have those dollars to put towards the high school project, um, and be able to pay for that and still have some left over for maybe part C of the agenda. Um, and so, really, and, and we're just kind of flipping expenditures. We're, we're taking on retiree payments before June 30th, freeing those, freeing that budgetary dollars up in 18-19 to do this particular project.
So why wouldn't we just take those dollars right now to do the construction projects for the high school?
So if we, we can't get it done before June 30th, and thus it would count as an 18-19 expenditure, and you'd be showing a deficit spending in 18-19. So we have to take some of those expenditures away from 18-19, bring them into 17-18, literally the week of June 26th, we can make that particular payment, cash out the door, and now that's less expenditure in 18-19 to be able to put towards this high school project.
And it also helps to have that obligation.
It's nice to have that obligation, to have that, to show that that obligation's no longer there. I mean, whenever you're looking, talking about liabilities, that simply has a, a negative connotation, that we can show that we're kinda doing some of those pieces upfront. Our retirees, I would, uh, think they'd appreciate getting those, those dollars prior to June 30th, our agreement says, prior to September 15th. So to have that in there, um, that obligation to them earlier would be a, a benefit for them. It benefits us in order to do this project. There's a lot of nice trade-offs that can occur.
Any else for Mike? Okay, uh, C, I think it is, I'm guessing, uh, high school or, uh, middle school.
So what we just walked through, um, a bigger piece here, uh, with, with the project being, what we just, well, just, what we just saw, I won't rehash it. Uh, scope of the project at this point in time is 140. We believe that's a little high, correct, Todd? It's possibly a little high. We're being on the safe side here with this, uh, which, which is okay. It's better to be conservative in this instance. So what we hope to do in, in order to fund this, we've got about, um, we've got a few dollars left from the retiree transfer, something around $15,000. But what we're noticing now, as we discussed last time, is that we appear to be firmly in a surplus this year for health insurance. It's not erasing the entire amount that we were in deficit last year, but it is certainly, um, a surplus right now in this area of the budget. And so what we would look to do here is take the health insurance, um, surplus from this year, or any other surpluses that we find within the budget. And we would take on, if you recall, last fall at this time, we were discussing specifically at, uh, energy efficiency projects and how to minimize the tax impact of energy efficient projects. And the district decided to take on 115,000 of the $600,000 project. In other words, we were, we're taking those dollars out of Fund 41, if you remember those, those discussions. Here, because we would have a surplus, we would, the cash is already out the door, we would reclassify those expenditures from Fund 41 back into Fund 10. It's just putting a different code on. The cash is gone, it's all the same cash account, but Fund 41 expenditures would now become Fund 10. In other words, we'd be replenishing our Fund 41 account back up, um, from what we thought we would be down to, if that makes sense, from 350, bring it back up to maybe 500, somewhere around that range. So with this middle school project, 78,000 of it applies, uh, can be applied to Fund 41, falls underneath that, um, scope in Fund 41. So we would take some of those dollars that we replenished with Fund 41 and use those replenished dollars to handle 78,000 of the 140,000 of the middle school. We currently have $35,000 set aside in the middle school budget that was already there for upgrades to the buildings. And so there we would take that 35,000 and use it for this purpose, and so now 78 plus 35, whatever we're at, around there, about around 108. The other 25 to 30, we would simply take from the buildings and grounds budget, um, and we had a little bit of savings in the, um, Chromebook department as well, that we would bring over to, um, some of the technology purchases and some of the different things that have to happen in that arena. So with the $78,000 that we're replenishing into Fund 41, we would use that. We'd use 35,000, that's already in the budget, in the preliminary budget, and another $25,000 in buildings and grounds and technology. We're still at a point in the budget, again, being preliminary, where we can make different adjustments still, uh, clearly. Um, literally, this preliminary budget is changing daily. It's changed already today. You already have an outdated preliminary budget, 'cause that's what's happening at this point in the year. Uh, but as of right now, this is where we'd find the $140,000 for this particular project in 18-19.
Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, what if we, um, what if we only spent, you're able to come up with $140,000, what if we only spent 70? What would happen to the other 70?
Well, for right now, we have a number of projects that we can just keep going down the list, John. I mean, quite honestly, I mean, part of what, part of the 140 that we're doing now, part of what we're looking at is the, is the pan, the outside paneling still. I mean, that's still number one, probably on our radar, from a buildings and grounds standpoint. The reason we're holding off on that piece of this is because we wanna know from the referendum, are we gonna have any surplus at the end of that referendum? Because those surplus dollars can absolutely be spent on infrastructure needs that we have, especially that wall paneling. This middle school project and the high school project doesn't fall within the question of the referendum. I mean, those are dollars that we have to find in the budget. If we have surpluses like that, we would start to look at that wall paneling for sure, um, and then any other instructional needs as well. It would be a discussion, um, as always, if we come to a point where we're finding surplus dollars. At the end of the day, we will always probably find a balanced budget because the needs are there to continue moving on in this district, to continue moving forward.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate all of yours and yours foresight, 'cause, uh, that's looking into the future, and that, that's very good. I commend you. Anything else? All right. What's, what's D?
Oh, handbook.
Staff handbook. Thank you.
So, uh, we have Karen Gonzalez here. Um, Karen, come on, come on up.
Yeah.
Come on up.
We haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't seen you since job description time.
She's got that chair.
Pull a chair, yeah.
A comfy chair.
Yeah.
Do it well.
Uh, so, so Karen has been spending quite a bit of time, um, in the handbook, uh, which, which is good. Um, really, as we look at the handbook, there, there were mul, as you can see in this breakdown, a lot of, um, updates, clarifications of language was really the focus that this handbook had. And so as you look at kind of the summary of changes, what we noticed right away is a red line version was gonna be extremely difficult and super messy, because there were literally red lines on every, it seemed like whole paragraphs being crossed out, when in essence, all they were doing was either changing slight verbiage or moving those paragraphs around within the handbook for better flow of topics. So what we thought was best to attempt to begin to show you this is through this summary of changes spreadsheet, to at least see that on nearly every page, something is happening. And if you wanna reference that, if you're going, wait a second, what does that mean? Uh, we did provide the 17-18 employee handbook in your board, um, folders, that you could look back and see, okay, what, what was there, and, oh, I see they're just moving different things around. The major changes of the handbook I put into the actual cover sheet, um, which was just a summary of some of the language changes that happened throughout the handbook, as well as really three major areas that we, we need, that we're proposing, um, that, that you accept for change. Um, what, the first would be the breach of contract for educators. Last year, we, we noticed, as we were hiring new staff and losing staff, that we were behind the curve in what we're asking our teachers to, um, pay in, in the form of breaking a contract once it was signed. Uh, we were in the negative when it came to collecting a contract breakage fee versus what, um, what was going out, or, we, we were behind the curve, is, is, in essence. So we're proposing a change here that matches what we put into the contracts, which is a step process of 1,500, 2,000, 3,000. Most often, we are seeing right now a $3,000 contract breakage fee, um, even now, at, at this time of the year. We're asking for August 1. We feel like it's a step that, that is simply appropriate at this time compared to where we were. Um, so that's number one, and, and really that only comes into play, obviously, for those educators that decide to leave the district. They can pay that fee, negotiate it, or whatever they need to do with their other, with their other districts.
So you're not seeing a step in other districts, you're seeing a flat 3,000?
Often, we're seeing 3,000. I can't, I mean, some are steps, some are 3,000, just right away. Um, I feel like steps are appropriate. If you're gonna let us know early on in the cycle, you know, you can't be exorbitant with your contract breakage fee, that's not appropriate either, or, um, this is when you're getting late into August and you're trying to get a teacher to come on board, um, from, you gotta, it's, it's, you gotta pay up, and that's where we get some of that from. Second, uh, we're asking to align our pair professionals, our new hour supervisors, and our food service holidays to align with our teachers. Right now, they were getting five holidays throughout the year, yet our teachers were getting three. Uh, they work the same amount of time, same amount of days. We would ask that their holidays be aligned with teachers and bring it to three instead of the five.
What were the two extra ones?
(sigh) Christmas Day.
There were two on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, because the teacher three are Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Memorial Day. Those are the three that they get. Yeah.
So if they're off for a Christmas break?
Well, listen, they're, they're contracted people. It's a little different, in that they're contracted people, and thus we could place the holidays September 4th, 5th, and Sa, I mean, it, it doesn't necessarily matter where they go within the schedule. They have three paid holidays.
The three are Memorial Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving. The five are New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, and two for Thanksgiving.
Okay. Two for Thanks, so it was a second one for Thanksgiving and New Year's?
Job day.
So Christmas was never on there. So we wanted to align, if you're, if you're working the school year, let's align it all with what the other employees have, our educators have, which is three.
Well, but is there an actual, was there, I mean, did anybody look into why this was the way it was? Because sometimes that can be awfully relevant. For example, teachers may be out from, I don't know, day after, or, you know, beginning winter break until, I can't remember exactly when they're out, but that doesn't necessarily apply to custodial staff or something like that. So were they providing more, um, holidays off for custodial staff in a sense, because they don't get all these days off that the teachers do?
So this isn't custodial staff?
I, I was, this is a hypothetical example.
Right, so custodial staff, because they work the year, the full year, they get the 10.
Okay.
And they've got the 10 holidays, just like all 260 staff.
Correct.
We have 210 staff, 210 days, mostly our secretaries in each of the buildings. They've got the five days, 'cause they work a few more days, they work 210 instead of the 194. We're just trying to align that, then. If, if you're working the 178, why are you getting the same vacation as someone who's working 210 days?
Okay.
That, that's where that rationale came in for us. Again, this is all preliminary, this is our rationale for this at this point. Then the third major change, um, would be our custodial, uh, vacation schedule. This would be for custodians hired after July 1, 2018, so no custodians on staff right now, but moving forward, we would align their vacation schedule with the, with our other, um, 260-day staff. Right now, they can, custodians, again, if you wanna look at history, I'm guessing it's some sort of agreement that has gone back prior to, to Act 10, they can accrue up to 25 vacation days, where every other 260 staff can accrue up to 20. We're not sure why there is that imbalance. We'd wanna bring that back in balance, and new custodial hires would be on the same 260 and accrue up to the four weeks and not the five weeks, which is just different from other employee groups.
So how would you handle somebody who's got 25 now? If we change it?
I, I'm, I, as of right now, I'm proposing we don't, that they are still under.
Their grandfathered.
Their grandfathered in.
At 25.
At 25. We can step that up, we can change, we could, we've toyed with, we, we've thought about the idea of, if you're not at 20 yet, do you cap it then at 20? I mean, there's different ways we can go about it. This would be a way to say, nobody on the custodial staff right now would be affected. They would all fall under the old vacation schedule of accruing 25. New people coming on could accrue up to 20 moving forward. I would, I would be up for suggestions on that, certainly.
So how many people would that affect if, that are not at the 25, uh, days that are currently?
Yeah, I'd have to look at that number. If we're talking custodial staff, um, above 20, I mean, it's, it's quite a few. I mean, we have an experienced custodial staff here. Um, it would, I, I don't, I don't, I, I don't know. I don't know.
I think it pr, it probably would create, um, some animosity if you changed that, whereas if you changed it for new people coming, I think it would be an easier, easier for the current staff.
Yeah.
So the custodial staff wouldn't get new contracts, so it'd be considered a new hire if they changed buildings, changed ships, anything like that?
No.
To your point about the, earlier, the breach of contract, or whatever you wanna call it, I think you mentioned before how maybe we lost, you know, say we lost 10 teachers to another district at that time, and we gained 10, how we were losing money because they had a bigger one than we did.
'Cause they, you want me to talk more about that?
No, I was just gonna say, you didn't mention it this time, and I remember you mentioned it last time.
Yes, yes.
That's part of it, too, that we were losing money on that.
Correct. Um, a lot of other things are, are clarification language and not changes like those three, in which they really can affect your, your work, um, and, and your, and your benefit in some way. Um, making things just a lot cleaner. I think the look, um, of the handbook in and of itself, lots of links, lots of links to our new board policy. Uh, we could probably even sh, over time, shorten this down even more and begin to simply point to board policy. When we brought Neola on, that did us a tremendous favor in being able to just say, it's in board policy, look there, and creating those links, uh, which Karen did a nice job on. You can see within, um, the table of contents, we're starting to get into some appendices, which apparently X is the appropriate letter there, and not a C, as we looked it up, is not appendices. I re-looked it up, but we can look it up again and make it a C if we wanted it. Um, so, we would, we would bring on, we, we, we are looking at bringing on appendice, oh, it's actually done two different ways here, we'll have to correct that. We, we'll have to create these appendices and, um, specific towards some of these employee groups, in which everything, um, in the main context of the handbook will apply to everybody, and then things that are specifically for employee groups, we break out. What we've noticed is the employee handbook is severely slanted towards the educator, and we wanna make sure that we bring out those educator pieces, put it into a separate area, whereas the majority of the handbook, that above, is for all employees to kind of be for them. And so that's gonna take some, some time as we begin to make that transition, but it's starting here, and we're looking forward to continuing to add to it and clarifying things, as people have questions throughout the year, which they inevitably do. So, uh, again, I would encourage questions, I would encourage throughout the week, um, if you continue to think about this and, and look some things up, or something catches your eye and you look it up in the 17-18 handbook and see how it's changed, please reach out to Karen and I. Uh, but we will bring this back, uh, for the board on June 18th for proposal, but we can certainly take any more questions right now, too.
I have a procedural question.
Yeah.
When we do go to approve or disapprove this next meeting, can we disapprove of this, a particular item, or are we approving the entire handbook?
I would say you can do whatever you wanna do. If you wanna say approval upon striking, I'm su, you can put into a language, you probably know this better than I do, as far as what that language might look like, but you could certainly say, striking this, or absent this, or, we can bring it back in July, or we can, I, I don't, I don't really know.
So it's not an all or nothing?
It's not an all or nothing, no, certainly not, certainly not.
But I would say that if there are suggestions, get it fixed before next week. If there's some conversation about something that will be, like, talk about it now, 'cause I think the challenge is if we do wait till July, the fiscal year starts at July 1, and these changes would, should be implemented July 1, and if we wait till after, we're gonna have some retro things that we'd have to do.
And what we do is, we, we kind of soft rolled this out this past year, but we are through, um, we asked that our employees sign something that says that they have read the handbook, and so we would wanna do that sometime in August, get that email out to them before they return that they have indeed read the handbook, so we wanna make sure that it's out there and clean and that the whole board agrees with.
So, quick question. For the things that we're talking about in contracts, like, uh, breaking the contract.
Yeah.
When do those contracts go out so that we wanna be in?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So contract language overrides the handbook.
Okay.
Okay? Handbook states that these things are informational, they are the policies of our district, but the contract overrides handbook. So in people's contracts, there is this language, and there was some, hey, we're talking about, we're looking at the 17-18 handbook, it says this, my contract says this, but it's an 18-19 contract. The timing of it was bizarre, we're asking now that the handbook matched the contract moving forward.
So I'm against taking those two days away from the, uh, that set of group of people. I don't know if they, when they got that, did they give something else up to get that? I don't know that. Uh, I think, uh, I don't think, I understand in a lot of the positions, sometimes you pay more for your insurance, and, so sometimes it costs you more to be employee here.
Sure.
Um, I, I'm just, I, I don't, I, I don't think that's a worthy cause to take those two days away. I think it's a worthy cause to give it to them, to leave it as is. Um, yeah, so I will be speaking, so I will be speaking about that, I guess, to that. I don't know if anybody else feels this way, I might be the, uh, the minority, so, but that's how I feel.
Yeah, I mean, I, I had a similar thought, um, before you said that, and, you know, I, I know that you are trying to standardize, but I, you know, hate to see the two days taken away from people. And maybe you could do it over a period of time, or go down to four and then go down to three, or give them some kind of notice that this is gonna happen at some time in the future. But, um, yeah, I, I kinda feel the same way, that I don't like to have that taken away.
Yeah, so I, I feel the same, especially as Quinn, as I said, we, we don't know how things got to that point. If we knew the history behind it, maybe I would feel differently, if it was some oversight somewhere and whatever, but as Quinn said, maybe they gave something up to keep that, or it might've been a trade-off, so I don't know, so.
Yeah, well, I, I would say for most support staff, we're looking at 2010 agreements. I mean, that's, I mean, when they, when they speak about benefits and things, they'll say that was in the contract. Well, that was, was 2010. So that's probably where it came from, was that negotiation. I completely understand.
So.
And you're, you're right, we, we are thinking standardization, and that's where that comes from.
So in general, I, I support trying to improve somebody's quality of life and not do what they may perceive as, as kind of a step back in their quality of life. And, and like I said, not knowing where it came from originally, I mean, I'm in favor of leaving it the way it is, and I do have a concern about, um, uh, like you say, changing the, like, new custodial hires, only getting 20 days, for example. I've seen before in, in some industries where, um, when you have the same, essentially the same population of folks, but these folks are under a different set of rules, you can end up with a rub between, in a sense, perceived classes of folks that have the same stuff and, eh, that have the same positions or whatever, and, and I would hate to see us generate problems by creating two different.
Yeah, I, I don't, I understand that. I, I guess my only response to that would be, to, to gain more than 20 days, you, you have to already be, when you start going to day 21, 22 for vacation, you've been here 20-plus years. And so the majority of our staff that have those 25 days, quite frankly, don't have 25 year, 20 to 25 years left in the workforce. And so I, you know what I mean? And so that benefit, while it's different, they, they would never. And so I, do you know what I mean? And so that benefit, while it's different, they, they would never, they, they, nobody coming on July one, twenty eighteen, is gonna get to, to twenty vacation days that they've earned, for somebody who has more than twenty vacation days is out of the workforce. Does that?
No, I understand what you're saying, because they, the longer they've been with us, the more days they earn in a year.
Correct.
And you're saying that at, at no point in time will they end up capped off before these folks are allowed to keep twenty-five.
Are they gonna say, I'm still at twenty and you're at twenty-five? That's not fair.
Right.
I can look at the data to see if that ever has the potential to cross over. I don't think it does, but I will bring that back.
Okay.
Steve?
Uh, just, you know, with your thought about maybe they gave something up, I think that, in reality, that could happen. I think that in the seven years since the contract, eight years con- since contract, I kind of feel like a lot of the, what was going on has kind of leveled off. So, eh, an approach could be similar to what we're talking about, you know, with just doing new hires, not taking away from the people who negotiated it, who were fighting for that, but still in a attempt to kind of, um, standardize things, that would, it might be worth that effort. And again, the kind of, same kind of thing, like, how many people are we talking about, close to retirement, that kind of thing, to kind of look at and see. Cause I agree, you don't want two separate working staff, but you still want to kind of keep it on the same level.
Yeah, I would be open to that opinion, uh, but again, I would not be open to the changing, so. I think that's gonna be one issue that might, uh, change it, but other than that, uh, Kevin, any, any opinion?
Uh, you said, can you repeat the five days that they had?
It was Labor Day.
It was two for Thanksgiving, Labor Day, Memorial Day.
New Year's Day.
The difference was New Year's and his second Thanksgiving Day.
Mm-hmm, correct.
We can make it, it doesn't enter the day after Thanksgiving.
Right.
That's not a holiday.
No, cause they can take it at any point.
It's just you choosing your own five.
Correct.
It's really not the point, right.
It's five paid holidays in which you are not here. That doesn't align with the ten holidays of your own staff, I'm like.
Well, yeah, duh, ten, the ten, the ten is the day after Thanksgiving. That is a holiday to that right now in the handbook.
I don't know why that's a holiday.
Gotta make it suspended.
It's a business day.
Well, it depends on who you are.
Markets open that day.
Well.
It's a business day.
If the market's open, it's not a holiday.
Yeah, I don't know if it does make what they are, right?
Stephanie?
Well, you have to designate, you have to designate it from a payout standpoint. When, when will it, when will it get paid out?
Employee calendar.
So, anything else on this matter? Thank you, Karen, thank you, Mike. Jonathan, you're on.
You can continue.
No, no, no.
Sure?
I brought this fire, baby, it's all yours.
Thank you. All right, so item six is action items, so six A is personnel recommendations. Uh, do I have a first?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries on the seven administrative reports and updates. Seven A is student achievement, Educlimer, with Lynn Leroy and Amy Stunzle.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
So, we had talked, we've been talking, um, throughout the year about student, student achievement and student data.
I don't think it's on.
What?
There you go.
Oh, okay, there you go. We've been talking about student achievement, student data, and going through a lot of reports, um, various facets of the district as it applies to what students are involved with as it pertains to academics and exams and testing and indicators. Um, we're looking to move toward creating our dashboard for the district. And one of the questions that had come up in a previous meeting was our use of Educlimer. We were just completing our first year, um, using Educlimer. We purchased it last year, onboarded it this year, went through some training things, and have been using it now to collect our student data and have, uh, sort of one central location for that, uh, for that data to live, rather than having to go to various portals and places to find our data. So Amy is going to do a report on Educlimer, um, just basically the rollout and how it's being currently used and plans for the future.
Amy, I think you had to turn your mic on.
Do you want me to sit or stand? Our computer.
Whatever you're recording.
I can probably access the computer better sitting. So I'm very glad to be here to update you on our rollout of Educlimer. We originally planned for a three-year rollout and we are still on that trajectory. So the first thing I'd like to do is just kind of go through with you what we accomplished this year and what we still have to accomplish for years two and three. And then give you a couple of, um, I'm gonna go into the site and give you some live examples of some of the things that we've accomplished this year so that you can see what we're using the program for. So our year one rollout, we actually got more done than we had originally intended. Um, we have full behavior intervention data going into Educlimer. So at the three, or the two elementary and at the middle school, uh, all of the teachers and administrators are putting all of their behavioral data directly into Educlimer. At the high school, behavior data is going into Infinite Campus, which is, then rolls it into Educlimer. Um, Infinite Campus, which is our student information system, every night updates Educlimer directly at twelve oh-three AM, I think it is, so that it comes across the computer. Um, and so that, that, all of that data then gets compiled for us into Educlimer. It's very helpful for us in our PBIS implementation or our behavioral interventions. Um, instead of keeping all that data on paper and in folders and going back and having to count things, as some of our schools apply for PBIS status, um, we have everything available for them and at everyone's fingertips. We've also added academic interventions to Educlimer this year, so all of our math and literacy interventions are being tracked in Educlimer. So anyone who needs that information can see everything they need to see in one place. Where previously with our interventions, we had data stored in multiple places. And to get a clear picture of student performance, you had to look at all of those different places. We're tracking attendance in, uh, Educlimer as well. All of our historical data has been uploaded. We have uploaded data back from two thousand and thirteen to present, so all of our, um, large assessments, all of our behavior data, everything that we had back to two thousand and thirteen has been uploaded. We have our elementary teachers uploading their benchmarking data, which is something we didn't expect to get done this year, but we did. So as they benchmark three times a year with their students, look at their reading levels, uh, that is going into Educlimer, so that we can access that. It also gives us an excellent and very quick picture of our demographic data, which is very helpful for some of the things that are coming up with, um, ESSA, needing to see our gaps and needing to close those gaps. As part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, we can see that very clearly in Educlimer and track our effectiveness in closing those gaps. Our teachers have been trained on the basic interface, and right now we are at approximately, and this is just a guess, about thirty percent use by our staff. So our teachers are putting in behavior and benchmarks, and then most of the data right now is being used by our teacher leaders and our administrators.
So Amy, you said, uh, previously you said, a- anybody can, uh, get into this information, meaning any teacher or any administration?
I.
Are there blocks for any of these?
That's a good question. Yes, there are. Um, there are different levels of permissions that can be assigned. So teachers have one level of permission to their grade level, whereas an administrator would have a permission to their whole building, or a district administrator would have permissions to the whole district. So based on a person's role, um, they have different permission availabilities in the program.
So does it allow for, like, individual outliers, like G and T kids that might be advanced in a particular thing beyond their grade level?
Allow for what? To track them?
For a teacher to access that child's data.
Yes.
Okay. Cause if it's a eighth grade teacher who can only access eighth grade data, you know, but they've got a child from seventh grade attending their math class, you know, how do they get into that child's data? So that's what I ask.
They are able to access data for anyone that's currently enrolled in any of their classes.
Okay.
And then for each of those students, they can also access that student's historical data, so they can look back and see how they performed in previous years.
Thanks.
Okay. On the right, you see the trainings that we did for this year. The yellow trainings are trainings that we actually had with Educlimer staff. The white ones, we did a train-the-trainer model. So we had our administration and data leaders go to Madison for the very first training, uh, which was just an overview of the program. We've attended both the summer and winter summit, which are, um, ways that our teachers and our teacher leaders and our administrators can pick specific areas of Educlimer that they would like training in. And we've done some, um, trainings where our teacher leaders have trained other staff areas. As you can see there in August of last year, we broke out and did separate trainings for different groups based on what they would need to use this year. For year two, which would be next year, um, and I'll go through these quickly because we, we haven't gone into them too deeply yet, but we plan on adding smart forms, which is a feature that will allow us to keep all of our district forms that people fill out in one place. Um, and then they can be accessed and even auto-populated. So if I needed to fill out a form for student John Smith, once I type in John Smith, all of his data auto-populates for me, phone numbers, email addresses, all of that, making, filling out forms much quicker and easier to access because they'll all be in one place. What we are really excited about is the parent and student portal, which will allow parents and students to have their own accounts in Educlimer to view their own data. So students will be able to do things like learner profiles, set, set goals by looking at their testing data. And parents will have access to all of their students' testing data, grades, things like that, in one place where they can see a whole, complete picture of their student. Uh, we are planning on adding more local benchmark assessments, like the elementary reading benchmarks. We'd like to see more things where we're looking to see, is our student on track at this particular grade level? Right now, the standardized benchmarks are third grade reading level and eighth grade math. We'd like to get more in there, so that we're not just seeing our students on track in third grade and eighth grade. Do we have local level science assessments that can be in there that can track if a student is on track at certain times, and so on and so forth. Um, we will continue adding thresholds, which I'll tell you a little bit about in a minute. We will, uh, we hope to have teachers sharing data. Uh, this program gives teachers the opportunity to look at a specific piece of data and then share it with their team. And we'd like to see that happening for PLCs. By the end of two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we would like to see guidance and administrators using this one hundred percent for their data and teachers at about a seventy-five percent use or better. Training's coming up. We have, uh, Educlimer coming here for a personalized training in July for our new administrators, coaches, and guidance counselors. We may or may not send people to the summer summit. We may not need that at this point, so that's kind of an open, open door. And then we plan to do in-house trainings in August and for parents and students once we open the parent and student portal.
So Amy, the utilization at seventy-five percent or better is at the end of year two?
Yes, at the end of year two.
All right. I'm gonna be a real stickler about this. Why so low? And what are gonna be the barriers?
Well, I think part of, part of the seventy-five percent participation is we won't have a hundred percent of the program rolled out yet. So that the, there will be some areas that teachers won't actually have engaged in yet. Um, I would like to see a hundred percent of teachers using it, but at seventy-five percent fidelity. So they're using most of the program features, but perhaps not all of them yet.
Guess I'd like that clarified then, because I really want the message that the teachers aren't using it.
Good point.
Instead of, they're just not able to access it.
Yes.
Yet, so they can't use it.
Is there, uh, is there gonna be anything that the parents are not going to be able to see about their child?
We, honestly, I, I can't answer that question yet because the parent and student portal hasn't opened. They're looking at a fall two thousand and eighteen opening date. I would assume Educlimer is very good with having many different levels of permissions and things that people can and can't see. So I would think that would be customizable, but I can't tell you for sure yet.
When you say they, who do you mean by they?
Oh, uh, Educlimer, the people that created Educlimer.
So they haven't, uh, they haven't created that feature yet, or they haven't activated that feature for our district yet?
Both. They, um, Educlimer started out as a private business with just two people, a husband and wife that created it. And when they got to the point where there's so many schools involved, and this just happened this year, and they got stuck with the parent-student portal, they couldn't figure out how to finish it. Um, they were purchased by another group called Luminate Education, who is a much bigger company, who is now helping them finish up that parent and student portal. They're providing them with the assistance they need to get that technology out to schools. So no schools have it yet.
Okay. So is this going to replace Infinite Campus then?
No. Um, Infinite Campus is the basis of this program. This is a second layer above Infinite Campus.
Have you gotten feedback from teachers, administrators?
The feedback that we have gotten, occasion, or originally we got some pushback. Um, teachers thought, maybe we don't want another place to put our data. You know, we're putting things in Infinite Campus, we're putting things in spreadsheets. Uh, but as they start to use it, the response is pretty overwhelmingly, this is fantastic. Um, especially as we train more people and then they learn different parts of it that work really well for them. Um, they are really impressed by the capabilities of this and the time-saving it he- it is for teachers and administrators.
Does it talk with Infinite Campus?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't have to do double duty, double entry?
Nope. Anything that gets put into Infinite Campus gets ported over every twenty-four hours to Educlimer.
This is a weird question. I don't know how to, what answer I'm looking for.
Mm-hmm.
But with, uh, security measures for it, what kind of safeguards or what are they doing to protect the students' data within the database?
In terms of, like, keeping someone from being able to hack it, is that what you're looking for? Okay, um, yes, and that was a concern when we first, um, brought this to the board a year ago. It has, um, I wish I could remember the, the quote that Eric originally gave us, but it's quite safer. It's, it's a lot safer than your typical information that's out on the internet. I can't remember the, um, inc- the encryption that it uses, cause I'm not that minded of what bit encryption it used, but it's as safe as Infinite Campus, which is what holds all of our, um, really deep student information. So we have not heard of any problem with hacking student information. And I can get more information from you on that.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, the last year will be pretty slim. Hopefully we'll have most components rolled, rolled out by year three. By year three, we'd like to roll out the SLO feature. Um, each teacher is required to do a student learning objective every year as part of educator effectiveness. Um, Educlimer has a tool where it will take all of your students' data and suggest the best student learning objective for you. So it'll look at your data and say, here's a place that you really need to pay attention to what your kids are doing. Why don't you make this your SLO? Instead of teachers having to figure out for themselves what that would be. It also has a meetings feature where anytime that you have a meeting about students, you can track that, record that, and track it, um, in Educlimer. And then we would continue to add district benchmarks and at this point have teachers using it at one hundred percent. And I'll just quickly show you a little bit of what we've been doing. So we're gonna take a look at our academic interventions, our behavior interventions, and threshold notifications. So I'm gonna go live to the site. Um, one of the things that's great about this is I've already put my site in privacy mode, which means that you will not see any student names. So when we're having, um, big data conversations and we don't want to be drilling down to the student level, we can look just at student identification numbers, and they're not even the identification numbers that a teacher would know. They're ones that Educlimer makes up. Um, so that we're not sharing data that we don't want to share, that we want to keep confidential. Okay, so the first thing I'm gonna show you is how we are tracking interventions. And this is something that has been really important for us. It has provided a missing piece, um, that we didn't have in the past. And that was, we were having to track our interventions in three different softwares. And it became difficult to see what a student had done historically in terms of intervention, especially if we had teacher turnover. Where intervention is turnover and we didn't know, where did that data go? Where did that teacher leave that data? What did that teacher do? So this is a student that, um, just finished up the school year. I, it's hard to see, I apologize. I'll explain it to you. Um, and it was in a math intervention. So here we have our intervention tracking for that student, and I can click on that. And what you see here, the yellow line is the twenty-fifth percentile, which is important because when we're looking at student achievement, a student who is constantly or trending below the twenty-fifth percentile is a student we want to pay special attention to because they might need to be referred for special education. Um, and so what we look at, this is everything that's happened in the intervention. And we can see that this student is regularly trending below the twenty-fifth percentile. So this is a student that we would want to look at and look at the rest of their data, as you saw on that other page. It showed us grades, standardized test scores, and decide, is this a student that we want to put into an accelerated intervention? So we want to put them into another round of intervention, track what happens, and then maybe this student would be referred for special ed. So we want to put them into another round of intervention, track what happens, and then maybe this student would be referred for special ed. Then I'd like to show you a student in a literacy intervention. And you'll see the same type of thing, except this is for reading instead of for math. And right away, you can see the difference here. So this student is trending completely above the 25th percentile. So all of the benchmarks that they've been taking within that intervention are above the 25th percentile. So this is a student where we would be able to, again, we always wanna look at the whole picture. So we'd be able to go back and look at their classroom grades, their standardized assessments, their behavior, their attendance, and say, this is a student who's shown significant growth in their intervention. So if they're not yet proficient, we might want to keep them in intervention. Or if they've reached proficiency, we can take them out and dismiss them from intervention. And we know that this is a student that isn't on a referral for special education track. What's really important about that is that we want to make sure that we are not referring students that don't need to be referred. That's one of the reasons that we have our tiers of intervention, so that we're not saying every child who struggles is a child who needs to be referred for special ed. We wanna be using our other resources, our differentiation in the classroom, our personalized learning, and our interventions to be able to address the needs of those students. And I know this seems like, wow, yeah, that's super simple, but we've never had anything like this before that gave us this quick visual picture that allowed us to really see how a student is tracking.
So Amy, how do you, what brings you to this person?
What, what puts a student in intervention?
No, how do you, so how do you observe it? How do you, you, when do you observe this information? Or how do you go, do you have it on a Friday that the ones at school, you guys sit down and?
I see what you're asking. So the interventionists are viewing this data all the time to make sure that they are providing the proper path and track for their student in the interventions. But other teachers are viewing this at three different points in the school year. They look at intervention data and things like STAR and MAP testing in meetings together three times a year to plan trajectory for their students, to make sure that everyone's getting what they need.
And that's enough time to intervene and make a difference? Thank you.
Okay, so that's what our interventions look like. Very quickly, I will show you behavior. And this is what I'm gonna show you now EduClimber can do for anything. Any test, any, any grade level, any behavior, but I'm just gonna show you the behavior. So I'm gonna show you fourth grade at Hales Corners Elementary. Okay. So what this breaks down is minor and major behaviors, and this is for the entire year because we're at the end of the year. So we see, we can see how many behaviors we've had. But more importantly is the breakdown. So we can see that the biggest behaviors happening are disrespect and inappropriate behavior. We can see things like March, and generally with the other grade levels, October. March and October are trending as our biggest behavior issue times. We've also seen this year, which is something probably not surprising, but it surprised me a little, at every grade level, lunchtime is our major behavior time. The charts for behavior are much higher between 12 and 1 o'clock at all the schools. And then we can also see where they're occurring. So for the fourth grade, they're having problems in the classroom and on the playground, most often. And then we get down, we can break down into the student level, and you'll just see numbers there. If an administrator were using this, they'd see which students were having the higher behavior so that they could intervene with those students. Again, this also helps to really track for the schools that are using tier one and tier two behavior interventions so that they can see exactly what students they need to intervene with.
So this data gets entered, just like when someone sees, you know, Johnny did something bad, they log in to do it? Or is it like through incident reports that are compiled by the office?
It is through incident reports that are compiled right at the time. Even the, especially at the elementary schools, even the playground attendants and lunch attendants have the capacity and the training to enter behaviors when they see them.
Okay, so they kinda like make a note and then backfill it at some point?
They can do entry, but can they, can they see data?
Yes. Oh, the, like playground and lunch attendants? No. They are restricted to just being able to enter data. Okay, and then the last thing I wanna show you is thresholds. And this is something that we started this year, just a tiny little bit. It's part of our big rollout for next year and probably one of the most amazing features. This is the tool that keeps the kid from getting lost in the shuffle. Okay? So what we can do with this tool is we can take any behavior, academic issue, attendance issue, or even demographic, and combine them into a threshold. So for example, one of the ones we have set currently for Edgerton is when three minor behaviors are committed by one student, that's a threshold. When that happens, a threshold notification goes out to whoever wants that. So in this case, I think it goes out to two or three people, the PBIS people and the principal. And so they get a notification that says, hey, Bobby has had three minors this week. And then they know that that's a student that they need to intervene with. That's a simple one. Another one that we have used very heavily this year is GT identification. As we, as we've been working with regulating the gifted and talented program, we have a threshold set up that notifies the gifted and talented coordinator anytime a student achieves 95 percentile rank or higher on an assessment. And so then they can take that list and look into that child and see, is this child on track for qualifying as gifted and talented? Some of the more complicated ones we have set up. The most recent one I set up was a dropout early warning system. And I'm just gonna click on that one for you so that you can see. I'll read those to you since they're so small. So for this one to trigger, the student has to have one or more suspensions, two or more major behaviors, a grade book below proficient for any class, a STAR score below the 25th percentile or MAP, and more than 10 days on excused absences. And that's, also goes along with the state criteria for dropout early warning. And if anyone triggers that, then that would go to guidance counselors, principals, special services staff to say, hey, this is a student we really need to intervene with. This is a student that maybe even at sixth grade, we've been notified might be a case that might drop out.
So it's any one of those criteria?
They have to meet all of those criteria for dropout early warning. Yep.
With absences, is that, like, what if it's October and you're worried about them, but they haven't been absent 10 times yet?
It's, it would be any, any, any of those that happen in a year.
Okay, so it rolls back 12 months?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
The GT thing, you said that kids identified as GT, you're looking at them for if they hit 95% or higher?
No. Any student who hits 95% or higher, it triggers a response.
For somebody to take a look?
Correct, to see, has the student been trending above the 95th percentile?
And why 95?
Because that's what the gifted and talented committee decided on when they created the handbook. And I don't know, do you know, is there a, is there a state 95th percentile for GT or is that the?
Is the DPI recognition, the guidelines for DPI, you might, we might look at trying to tweak that a bit because that criteria right now, where we're going from MAP to STAR, we had students that were trending up here for MAP and all of a sudden now they're down here for STAR. So what does that actually mean as far as the GT identification? So that's part of our summer work, looking at that and trying to reconcile some of that discrepancy a bit. But generally speaking, it was DPI guidelines.
So for next year, we'd like to create a lot more of these, so that we aren't missing kids. So that we're making sure that when students are struggling, someone is being notified. And that's what I have for you today. If you have any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That was very good.
Okay, on to seven B referendum update.
So we've been meeting biweekly, that's the word, yep. So we've been meeting this Thursday, but we have been meeting, we met with science teachers at the middle school Friday, met with them. We had one of the architects come out today. Mike Todd and I met with the architect and our six middle school teachers to talk about some of the layouts and designs. So she's gonna take back more of those suggestions. So it's just constant in iteration mode right now, things that they would like. And then the architect said, well, you know, here's engineering, you can't do, like, they want this here, well, you know, whatever. So we're in that, but I think they felt happy that they were involved in the process, that they were being asked like what works, and then bringing some of those designs. So we'll continue to keep them on a loop even throughout the summer in terms of that, so we'll give them updates. Met with Lori, and then she met with the architects when they were here two weeks ago. Looking at some options and they're starting to fine-tune some of them. One of them that we're looking at right now does include moving the front entrance of the building to the Janesville roadside. And so part of that has to do with the parking and traffic issue that it will alleviate. It also gives truly the front of it, it keeps the majority of the traffic off from God. So I have been contacted by the Village of Hales Corners who, I said, just give us a little bit of time because they're considering options, limited parking options. And I said, well, give us time to work through this because we wanna try to get as much traffic off the street, especially with our staff. So that's been a priority in looking at the, they've had some surveys done of the gradation off to the east side there. But I think that was probably one of the things initially that we looked at and, I mean, have been working with Lori at what that looks like. So we'll, it's not fine-tuned, but we'll bring, maybe next Monday night, we'll actually show you, because they're very sketchy right now. We don't want people to, because they can flip very quickly with all of that stuff, so.
Can I ask a question before we go on? So obviously, that school has been there.
Yeah.
Why all of a sudden now, after, how, how long has the building been there, the school been there?
1948 is the one section.
Well, this was from 1948, but the rest of the building even prior to that.
So, so 70 years. It's been there 70 years, right? Now, all of a sudden, there's an issue with street parking and they're gonna address it? Have they given any feedback as to why all of a sudden now it's, it's an issue they're taking up?
Okay.
I'd prefer not to.
Okay.
There has been.
I mean, it's not new, new, it's bad, it's bad for whatever, but in terms of taking action, I think relates to some changes that occurred at the, so.
So I, I would hope that the plans they come up with to where they place or proposed proposals they come up with to where to place the front of the building if they move it would be closest to where parents are allowed to park.
It is, it is.
Because what happens now is a plethora of teachers and staff park in the front of the building where the entrance is. And a lot of those folks have key fobs that they could get in the back, but yet there's open spots in the parking lot in the back. So parents can't find a spot to park on the street, even up to a block away. They park in the back and walk around the building, and that's especially fun in cold rain or snow or something like that.
This will alleviate that and totally separate it, so the back really is the back, and that's where staff would come in. The front is really the front?
And will actually reinforce the idea of having staff park in the lot as opposed to where it's most convenient for their passengers.
Well, that will look very different on that side of the building because it will be specific staff parking, so it will be.
Well, it's, okay. I don't know if you're catching my point.
But there's not enough staff parking lots, there's not enough staff spaces for the number of staff members that we have right now.
Except that anytime you go through there, there's, there are open spots, and yet the street at Godsoil is polluted.
I disagree.
No, go ahead.
I drive past it every day.
And I, I've gone through and counted the spots.
I mean, Lori's there.
I just assign staff to that parking lot. Now, on a given day, when you drive past, perhaps you might see a spot or two that might be a 14 person. It could be a person going to a meeting. It could be a person that's just sick that day. Or is landlocked into the lot and has to maybe leave for an appointment at the tail end of school and so maybe moves it during break to different locations that they can actually exit on time. But there's, there are, there could be spots available, but I assign about 30, at least 30 people to that lot.
And how many spots do we have in the lot?
I, I'd have to look at.
So in a typical time that I've gone through there, and I don't just count from the road, I've seen half a dozen to a dozen spots open usually easily. And, and having been somebody who tries to park, you know, at least within eyesight of the entrance, it's been fairly difficult. So, and I think you and I talked about that, like, several, several years ago. I mean, I could do the math, but.
So part of it, like, there are 34, 34 staff parking spots, there are 78 staff members. So this will accommodate all the staff members plus have plenty of room. And it will also make a longer path for the drop-off so that we'll get parents off from Janesville for longer and come around. So we'll sort of make that a little bit less. So, so we will show that when we have a, we're still working through some of this stuff. But at least that part of it is a, we needed to get that worked out first before some of the other places because where the drop-off was, taking care of some of the 4K stuff, drop-off and all of that. So those were, those were the priority items to get addressed for Hales Corners.
And we'll still preserve plenty of open space for the kids?
Yep, so some of it we're excited about for our early childhood 4K that will be within that courtyard. So that'll actually, in terms of that, so, so, yep, we're looking at all of that stuff. Hard scape plus soft scape and all of that, so, yeah. We have looked at a couple designs from the high school, too. We just keep, between those three projects is where we keep focusing and letting people and teachers come in and fill it in. And then Gray goes back and takes some, you know, designs in terms of that, takes more information. So it's just this constant iteration. They go and update the architect team, and then they bring it back. We show it to the folks involved and so. So next Monday, we'll bring you the current iterations of those drawings because we'll meet with them on Thursday. So you can sort of see some of those ideas, again, knowing that they're still very, very action-oriented form, but to see some of the things and discussions. We'll share those next Thursday.
Okay, great. On to seven C, school safety and security.
Yeah, so the primary thing since we met last time is that we submitted the safety grant. And so I'm just gonna let Mike share the primary things. There was, remember, two parts to that grant that you had, that where you were limited on the first part of it and then could use the other part for that. So I'll just, I'll have Mike share with, or in those.
Do you want the detail of those?
Just some, some, just as you are able to.
Sure, so certainly, the major focus of the grant was shatter-resistant film at the different schools and how far those dollars can go. The primary, again, the grant was broken up into a primary funding versus an advanced funding. We took advantage of the primary funding for each of the major entrances of the, of the buildings, except for Hales Corners. Obviously, that will change and we could look into that. As, as far as the advanced portion, we are doing more shatter-resistant film than across other areas of the district. We are upgrading our radio system. Part of our, sorry, I'm losing my words. Part of the evacuation drill, thank you, was not having clear communication between all four of the different spots that our schools were at. This will give us a repeater for the district with, to communicate across our different evacuation points and enough radios to go around for that. So that came directly from the evacuation drill and something that was crucial that we felt would be really good to have. So that was part of it. We're looking at some door alarms. As far as if doors across the different buildings are propped open for an extended amount of time, alarms will go off and we'll be able to see and respond to those areas in which a door is propped open for too long. Todd, what else am I forgetting? Thank you. Cameras covering what are currently blind spots across the district. Those will be shored up and give a police department greater access to those as well, to those, to those areas. So that's the funds, just like that. And so we submitted that last Wednesday and still waiting to hear. It's in review right now.
So you're looking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, oh yeah. We, we've used all the allotted dollars that were provided to us.
So you're looking at a trunked radio system then?
It's a two-way radio system, one repeater, a repeater enables us to go from one end of the thing to the other.
Trunked system. One thing, I don't know if you looked into it or not, but there's, there's ways to integrate, and I could put you in touch with people that have done this in some fairly secure places, but ways to integrate alarms with camera systems. So if you had, like, one particular monitor in, in a, in a, an area that's all, at a desk, for example, that's always occupied or something, an alarm goes off some, that camera automatically pops up on that monitor. So that, you know, if you have somebody at that always occupied desk, you know, alarm goes off, they just look at the monitor because it's already up there for them to see what's going on. So I don't know if you've checked in anything like that, or if you want me to give you a connection or, or anything.
Yeah, we can follow up.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, and next item is eight items for future consideration. Anyone have any else? On to nine announcements. Any announcements?
Any announcements?
I'll just say tomorrow's a reminder, we have our retire, our staff, all district staff picnic and recognition of those who are retiring.
What time is that going on?
Todd is grilling.
Todd is grilling again, yeah.
I didn't catch it.
The lunch is at 11:30 in the cafeteria.